I'm making this announcement in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act being Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 laws of the state of New Jersey. The Planning Board Secretary has prepared a schedule of the meeting of the Planning Board of the Borough of Kennelworth for the year 2020 and had posted a true copy of this schedule on the bulletin board located at the front entrance of Borough Hall and has mailed true copies of this schedule to the local source and the Star Ledger and is maintaining a copy of this schedule in Borough Hall. Accordingly, the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have been met and satisfied in regards to this meeting. Can we all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Cernoff?
Here.
Mr. David?
Here.
Mr. Grimaldi?
Here.
Mr. Pantina?
Here.
Mr. Maggio?
Here.
Mr. Calallo?
Here.
Mr. Scudari?
Here.
Mr. Herbalario?
Here.
And Mr. Saharcheck?
Here.
Okay. Before we get started, I want to let everyone in the room know that our planner is talking to us via telephone so he could hear everything and when you do speak, speak clearly, please lower your phones. The other thing I'm going to ask before we get moving is that anyone who is in this room is going to be here for the first meeting and the first order of business, which is going to be the Crincoli application. We're going to go out of order. We're going to have the Crincoli application for resolution first, then a Crincoli application. And if everyone else can quarantine themselves either outside or especially having enough distance here tonight, okay? This way, we can give everybody enough of room to conduct their business. I would respect that everybody follow that lead. Okay, with that being said, the approval of the September 10 minutes?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion is approved to approve by Mr. Grimaldi, seconded by Mr. Scudari. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Communications, Kathy?
None, Chairman.
Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to resolutions. Application 20-02, FDB Realty LLC, 207 North 15th Street. Luke?
Yes, this is, we, the Board heard this matter in September. It involved the property on North 15th Street. It was denied. It was for a subdivision, creating two undersized lots and the app wanted to put two, wanted to put a two and a half, a two-family house on each lot. Again, the Board denied it and this application is memorializing that finding. So again, a yes vote to deny the application and then a vote to approve the memorialization. We already denied it, so we're just approving the memorialization of the resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay, the motion is made by Mr. Grimaldi, seconded by Mr. Pantina. Roll call, please. Only the people that were here for that as well.
Mr. Cernoff?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Grimaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Pantina?
Yes.
Mr. Maggio?
Yes.
Mr. Calallo?
Yes.
Mr. Scudari?
Yeah. Okay, good. On to new business, going out of order. We're going to call application 5-20, Daniella and Suzanne Crincoli, 45 North 10th Street, Lot 75, Lot 8. Anyone here for that application? Can we check, Mr. Herbert, if you don't mind? Thank you. They may be out there.
Can we, how is notice and publication, Kathy? Good? Okay.
And I'll just state for the record, I'm going to refuse myself for this as I'm the one that got noticed for this project.
Okay.
Hello.
Hello. Come on up, we already called your numbers. We called your numbers.
Where did we go?
Well, you three are all together?
Yes.
Okay, so what we called here is Daniella, is that right?
Daniella.
Daniella and Suzanne?
Yes.
Crincoli. Okay, are you represented by anyone or are you here for yourself?
They're representing themselves, I'm sure.
Okay, so come on up to the, one of you, come up to the podium, whoever is going to speak, state your name, spell your last name for the record and we'll go from here.
Sure. Suzanne Crincoli.
Do you raise your right hand, please? With regard to this matter, do you swear the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth?
I do.
Could you just state, spell your last name, please, so we have it for the record?
C-R-I-N-C-O-L-I.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so...
Oh, do you want to know why we're here?
Yeah, the Ball, I'm sorry, I'll make you do a little, yeah. The Ball is in your court, you tell us why you're here, what's going on and we're here to try to help you and do whatever needs to be done for that. Yes?
If I may, you don't have to set me up. I have your application on the junk drive.
Okay.
I will leave it for you and you can direct me as to where you want to go.
Thanks so much.
To make it easier.
Well, I'm not going to direct that, that's the architect.
No, I first want to confirm that you're the owner and the applicant of the property.
Yes, that's correct. My husband and I are the owners and occupants.
Thank you.
So we have lived here for about 10 years and we want to stay in town. This is a great place to raise a family. Our current home is, you know, standard cake like we have in, you know, many of them in town, so we want to expand and get some more square footage. That being said, our architect can speak through any of the, you know, particulars.
Okay.
Any other questions for me or can I?
We may come back to you, Mrs. Crincoli. We may come back.
Thank you.
Okay. Can you state your name and spell your last name for the record?
Of course. My name is Frank Troya, T-R-O-Y-A.
T-R-O-Y-A, Troya?
I as in Izette.
I-A, Troya.
Why don't you put your credentials on the record, Mr. Troya?
Sure, so my name is Frank Troya. I graduated from New Jersey Institute of Technology with a degree and bachelor of architecture. I worked for Plan Architecture, I've been there since 2014 on Project Architect and I am currently licensed and good standing in the state of New Jersey.
Have you ever been before us in this?
Not now, but I've been before.
Do we need to swear? Did I swear you in on?
No.
Did not. Could you raise your right hand with regard to this application? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Troya, you have the floor.
All right, well, good evening tonight, thank you for coming out and hearing us speak with the Board. So as Suzanne Crincoli has said, you know, they've lived in this house for about 10 years now, they want to stay here.
Can I, can I interrupt you one second? Yes. I'm sorry. Kevin, can you hear Mr. Troya okay?
It could be a little bit better, Kevin.
Can you? I'm sorry to ask you if you could speak up a little bit if everyone can.
I'm sorry, this is...
Yeah, I know, it's a little rough.
Okay. So we like the area, you know, when we were going to design this house, we are obviously dealing with a couple of pre-existing conditions, a couple being the side yard setbacks and, you know, having an undersized lot. While we designed it, you can see on the right side of the sheet, we intended where we added a two-story addition to the rear to comply with the setbacks on the left side. On the right side, since it was so minimally over the setback, we decided to just align the right walls because it was more economical and just made more aesthetic sense. We are also here because we are requesting to add a front covered portico to the existing dwelling. This is requiring us to ask for a front yard variance. What we are proposing is, or I guess we're proposing a modest front stoop with steps that is covered. If we can go to the next sheet, I'll walk you through the existing floor plans. All right, so I will start you at the bottom left of the sheet and we can see where you enter into the house. So right now, there is an existing stoop there. It's not very large, it's only about three foot at the top and then you have the steps. You enter into the house and it's a typical center hall cake with your living room down your room on the both sides of the stair and your kitchen in the rear along with the bedroom. There is a one-car garage that is attached to the house, but there is no direct access from the garage into the house. Can you please pan up to the top of the page where the second floor is? A second. Yes. As you can see on the second floor, typical of a cake, there are two bedrooms up there now that are dormered out for head height. The bedrooms are fairly small in size and they really don't have a lot of closet space when you count the roof coming up in the back that limits your head height. So if you can please go to the next sheet, or I guess off the top right portion of the, this is just the basement, but the top right, so this is the existing dwelling, you can see where the front porch is, you can see where the dormer is along the top, and you can just see the existing house that we are working with. Next page? Uh, yeah, this page is good, you can just see now. Okay, so here, I'm going to focus on this sheet, on this plan, they're both the same plan, it's just the one on the left has the dimensions. So what we are proposing is, I'm sorry, we're proposing a covered front porch, again, it's on the right, you can see, we're proposing only five foot, that's pretty standard in size, it's enough room to get up there and receive a person, receive a package, just to have a nice little landing to enter into your house on. We are proposing to shift the stairs so that they are right off to the left, to the right, we'll have a nice sized dining room where the family entertains a lot and has a lot of people over. That will connect to the kitchen through a pantry and butler's pantry. Into the kitchen, you'll have a nice open floor plan that goes across the whole rear of the house where you can see through to the great room. Off of that, we are proposing a covered rear terrace, none of which I described requires a variance outside of the front portico. Again, you can see where we are stepping the new addition in to comply with the setbacks on the left side and on the right side, you can see where we are aligning the existing walls. Please go to the second floor. On the second floor here, you know, for the most part, the house is staying and remaining in the same bedroom, yeah, we're not adding bedrooms, all we're doing is removing a bedroom from the first floor and we're adding it to the second floor with a nice master suite as well as making the existing two bedrooms in the front slightly larger with more closet space, more adaptable for modern living today, not, you know, 40 years ago. We're proposing to renovate the bathroom, we're going to add a laundry room to the second floor, and then again, we'll have the nice master suite which will have its own private on-suite bathroom, walk-in closet and a rear terrace that is over the terrace block. Please go to the next sheet. Yes, you can please look in on the bottom right. So what we're looking at here is the proposed front elevation. We are proposing to, again, extend the house out to meet the existing first floor. We are also introducing two bay windows on the front for aesthetic details as well as a gable roof in the existing, or in the proposed roof line. We are matching all these pitches with the front covered portico and just steps, we will propose a brick veneer along the bottom with lap siding along the rest of the house. Can you please go, if we can go to the side?
Can I ask you, is the Blessed Mother in the front yard setback?
Yes, it is.
She's got to be there.
She's got to be there.
Oh, okay.
Did you see her there in the corner? That's right there.
Oh, yeah.
She's everywhere.
It's Mariana Hapshell.
Mariana Hapshell, that's why I said, I called her the Madonna on the Hapshell.
I'm sorry.
So what we're looking at here is the proposed right side elevation. We're also showing a dash line here that represents the existing outline of this elevation. So you can see exactly where the existing house starts and where we're proposing to add the addition. You can also see that we are going up in height, but we are complying with the municipal building height, which you can go up. We'll talk about the left side elevation. So again, you can see where the existing house was and you can see the line of where we're adding that. This is the portion where we are starting to step the addition back to comply with the setbacks. And then you can see over here, the covered on terrace and the walkout terrace from the master suite. And if you please pan to the right. And here we have a rear elevation that, again, we introduced gables to add some relief to the facade so it's not a flat facade. Again, we're using lap siding, some AZAC trim and a brick veneer on the base of the house. Yes, please. So here we are showing some conceptual photorealistic rendering of the house. I'll start you on the front view of the house, it's really just a little bit more detailed than the elevations were, a little more picturesque. So again, you can see what we're proposing is fairly modest, it fits in well with the surrounding neighborhood and, again, for the most part, we tried to comply, especially with all the regulations. If you could just pan over slowly, we can just keep talking. Again, we have a view from the front right, you can see where the bay bump outs are over the garage and over the other windows, and you can see even the front porch, it really doesn't even jut out that much because we disguise it with another shed roof that runs across in between the bays. This is the rear of the house with the terrace, if you can scroll down. Sorry. Okay. Yeah. So again, just a couple more views showing the front, again, you can see where we put the bump out and you can just see it's a very minimal visual projection for a front portico on the front where we're trying to just not make it look like we're really approaching on the front yard setback so it doesn't appear to be a detriment to the surrounding neighborhood. And then if you can finally go to the left side, you can zoom all the way out. So here, we're just showing a few other homes in the immediate area that have a similar addition to what we are proposing. Now, I cannot testify for sure that they are all within or over their setbacks, but when I looked at it via Google Maps, you can see that for the most part, all the houses on the street are in line, so I can only assume that if they're in line with our house and they're proposing a similar front portico, that they were over their setbacks. So we just want to just slide up to show that we are conforming with the surrounding context of the existing neighborhood. And that is all I have.
Okay. So first of all, let me say two things. Number one, Mr. Grimaldi, this helps us all out a great deal. Everything that we'd be fumbling up here, you've made it streamlined and really, thank you very much. Number two, Mr. Troya, there's nothing better than someone who's prepared. So your plan, your presentation, or what you've given me tonight makes my job and the Board's job a heck of a lot easier. That doesn't mean you've been approved, that just means I like what I say. But with that being said, I do have one question and then to the Board. If I understood correctly, on the left-hand side of the dwelling, you made sure that you gave us the proper setback by pushing it back and you achieved the setback. On the right-hand side, you said you were a little bit over, I think you said, but you stayed streamlined to conform? Did I hear that correctly? And what are you over by, an inch, two inch, three inch?
Uh, yeah, we're over by about two inches.
How much?
Two inches.
Two inches. So in order to keep a streamline with the house, you didn't have that ugly bump back, you just kept it?
Correct.
Okay, that's all I have for now. Anyone else? Nick?
I'm sorry, I can't see who's speaking, you know, it's hard.
Nick Pantina, you got the floor?
I just think it's pretty good to know, I like the little statue out there, I'm doing a little bit of a job on the back, that's what it is, but maybe did a pretty good job. Other than the fact that you're, you know, a little bit humbling in front of a setback because of the stoop, I guess, why, the existing, the existing house is what meant the setback, right? So by the people, when you put the portico on or when you put the roof on there, you have 20...
We're, yeah, 20, 20-something, yeah, I forget the exact, but, um, exactly, the existing stoop did encroach on the front setback, but currently ordered it, that is allowed once we, once we cover it, then it's a different story.
Mr. Maggio, did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted, you didn't talk about the other whole departments as far as coverage and...
Oh, I'm sorry, I just wanted... Sure, if you can, please go back to the first sheet and then the top right and I can run you through our zone chart. So, so here, you know, we show, have a column of all the existing and we showed all of our proposals. So again, the only variance that we're creating here is the front yard, the others are existing non-conformant setbacks. As far as coverages go, what we are proposing does comply by a good amount. As far as building coverage goes, we're 42% or 50% is required and max lot coverage, we're 55.5% or 75% is coverage required and for FAR, we are .59 where .75 is required. So we're well under all the coverages in regards, coverages, and it's really only the front setback that we are creating a variance.
Anyone else? Before we go too much further, we're going to ask our professionals if they have anything, but do we need to swear them in as well tonight?
Yes, why don't I swear? Kevin, are you?
Well, if, you know, I have a question if...
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't get you, Mr. David?
Yeah, no, I was looking to see if any other Board member had a question. So I'm trying to look at the one sheet that I have in front of me and the existing dwelling from a front yard setback is showing, of course, 25.33. Is the new facade, it looks like that's coming, that's going to be at 23 feet, so then the porch is going to extend from 23 into the setback or am I misreading?
Uh, no, it just must be Mr. David. Please zoom in on the proposed side line.
So the facade is staying exactly where it is?
Exactly, we maintain the existing front wall on the first floor.
Totally, okay.
Yeah.
And do you know, do you know how far the stoop currently extends into the front yard setback?
It's, the stoop itself is three foot and then the steps, I think there were three, so another 12 inches of steps, so another three foot.
Okay, so the front facade is staying exactly the same.
Correct, yes, we are not...
This was existing?
So, yeah, you can see, the existing was 25.33 feet setback to the house and we're proposing the five-foot stoop where it's covered, we're not counting the setback to the steps because that's not covered.
Oh, I see, what confused me then was, see the 23 feet, that's for the, that's for the overhang?
That's for the, yeah, because there's a second floor of setback.
That's what was confusing, I see, okay, so that's the overhang. Got it?
You okay?
Yeah, I'm good.
Thank you, Mr. David. Mr. Ray, though, can you swear in our professionals?
Kevin, if you could raise your right hand and Christian, you know, with regard to this application and the next one as well, do you swear that any testimony you will give shall be the truth?
I do.
Thank you. That was, again, our planner and our Board Engineer. Well, since Chris is in front of me, do you have any questions?
Um, yes. Are you in receipt of my letter dated November 5?
Sure.
And if you can turn to the second page, items to be explored. Yes, okay, so the, the APN is proposing to increase the impervious by approximately 900 square feet. That's going to, obviously, you're creating more runoff with site. Does the APN have any issues with any sort of seepage or drainage system properly to continue with?
Not at all. We will either have an engineer get involved depending on what the town requires or we'll design a seepage ourselves and we will account it for the addition as well as handling the existing house too.
And that will include any solar ops to...
Correct.
And lastly, the item for the APN to agree permit, just to make sure that, you know, any runoff will go through the works.
Yep.
That's everything I have, Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Kevin O'Brien, you have anything?
The only comment I have, Chairman, is I did not hear the applicant talk about the appearance of this portico compared to the other front porches on the street. I don't know if the Board wants to hear that kind of testimony or not, but that might be helpful in evaluating the variance.
Sure.
Yeah. Mr. Troya, if you could just answer that or give us some input on it?
Do you guys want a visual while I talk or do you want a visual of it on the screen while I...
If you have it there, let's do, let's do both because that makes sense.
Yeah, so we'll start with the, you know, what we're showing that, that existing dwellings on the house or on the street. So you can see the existing properties that we're showing, they have the same similar style, they have a gable end, a shed roof that kind of runs across, you know, in between the bays, they have white AZAC trim, they have two columns, one on each side flanking the stairs, and they all seem to be in the same similar size as the one we are proposing, you know, nothing extravagant, just enough to have a nice receiving area, you know, the number of steps vary because each site varies. If you could please go to...
Can you speak up a little bit, please?
Yes, I'm sorry. You know, in coordination with what's existing around, you can see we have a similar gable, white AZAC trim to decorate it, we have AZAC wrapped columns on both sides and, again, a five-foot porch with steps, railings on both sides, white railings to match whatever we're going to do in the rear as well. And, you know, in our opinion, it does match what the existing homes we are showing were.
So the roof line there, is that a shingled roof like the main house or is it a standing seam?
Uh, yes, it's going to be a shingled roof. Yeah, I mean, there's a, we might look at it once we get into further development and make it a standing seam, but at least at minimum it would be shingled, not hanging flat with the M or anything special.
Okay. Kevin?
Yes, sir, thank you very much.
Okay. Anyone want to ask questions about the construction, how it looks, does it conform with the rest of the, the street or what have you? Okay. Do you have anything else for us?
I do not.
Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Troya? Okay. Mr. David?
I guess it would be up to the Board members if any want...
Any public...
Oh, sorry, I totally forgot.
Yeah, I just, yes, you know what, I won't even go there, how new everything is all the time. Okay, what we're going to do is, we're going to have, we need someone to make a motion to open this portion of the meeting to the public to speak on this matter, I'm sorry.
No, I'll make one.
Oh, you're making the motion, on this matter and this matter only.
Right.
Made by Mr. Scudari?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. David. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak about this project? Seeing none? Someone make a motion, okay? Mr. Scudari is going to make the motion, seconded by Mr. Navarro. Calallo, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Board members, you see what's in front of you, we have a house here that is tastefully done. I will say it again, Mary's sitting on the corner, she's watching.
Has that apparently been...
I like...
Over your head.
She's right behind me.
Yes.
And I have to say that the, the house, to me, looks like it's conforming to everything that's going on on the block. Looking at some of the architectural design, I think it's very, very pleasing to the eye. We don't, we can't even say, why don't you put a plant here or do something, I think they covered it. So that is in my opinion. I would like to hear from some others before we make a decision. Mr. Scudari?
I did drive the street prior to coming here tonight and it does meet some of the other houses on the block. I think there was also one house that had a fully blown front porch that was very blockaded, but, so I think this does conform very well to the area.
Okay, great. Anyone else? The only other thing I would add is the portico didn't go on and didn't have that design, I think it would almost look out of place with everything else that's going on.
I agree with that, even just thinking about driving, driving past the house, it would be one thing if you took the whole front and bumped it out with, you know, five feet with the porch across the front, I think the weight very, 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 I'm assuming, I think the variance is almost an odd issue. in my.
Okay. So, Mr. David?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's up to the board to either make a motion for approval or deny.
And if the board does approve, we would have our normal conditions and I would reference the, our planners and our engineers' reports. Okay.
The conditions. Someone like to? Yes, Mr. Pantina?
I make a motion to accept the applicant's testimony and grant variance.
Okay. Motion is made by Mr. Pantina, seconded by Mr. Mazio, with the conditions that, what that Mr. Rego just said that he would reiterate from Harbor Engineering. Roll call, please.
Mr. Pacerno?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Pantina?
Yes.
Mazio?
Yes.
Mr. Calallo?
Yes.
Mr. Scuderi?
Yes.
Mr. Vogelario?
Yes.
And Mr. Zoharke?
Congratulations. Good job, folks. Thank you very much. Very professional.
Appreciate it.
Welcome. Thanks for staying and keep Mary in the.
Mary. Thank you a little step.
You got us with Mary. I want to put a condition they have to go.
Yeah, put the conditions, no more Marys in the book. Okay, let's just give them a minute or two. Okay. Let me organize the.
Picture it out.
Okay, here we go. The next application is application 383, 636 Boulevard, 636 Boulevard, Block 86, Block Here we go. Let me just get my paperwork set up before we get you going.
No, that's the point. The rest, they were done.
So can you just give me one second? Kathy, how are we on notice and publication?
We're good.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah.
Gary Goodman, on behalf of the applicant, 636 Boulevard LLC. Principal is Ywani Singh is the owner of that company. This is an application with regard to the former Sunoco station at 636 Boulevard. Mr. Singh has purchased the station and wishes to operate it in the same manner as it, as it was operated before, as a, as a two-pump gas station with repair base. The history of this purchase, when we went to contract, we were supposed to purchase a functioning gas station. However, Sunoco, through their attorneys in Texas, insisted that due to the way the New Jersey D E P operated, they wanted to remove the tanks and therefore make sure that there would be no environmental ramifications coming back towards Sunoco. So the contract was modified to allow the tanks to be removed, which have been removed. And Mr. Singh is now before you for what we believe is site plan approval to, again, install new tanks and operate it as a two-pump gas station with repair base in the same manner that Sunoco operated, only this gas station will be operated under the independent name of Express Fuel. And Mr. Singh operates a number of gas stations like this in Mannville, Hillside, Somerville, and this would simply be an extension of that group. Obviously, the station is in some degree of disrepair in the sense that it, it does need to be cleaned up. Mr. Singh is preparing to paint it and resurface the parking area and put in the arbor bindings along the rear area and, and also pursuant to the engineers' report mandate that he will make sure that they are taken care of for, for the year at least. There will be no lighting in the back. I actually received a call from one of the neighbors in the rear and told her about the plantings as well as the fact that there would be no rear lighting as there has not been rear lighting. In reading the memorandum of Mr. O'Brien, he makes mention of what he calls some, some variances on parking, tandem parking, and the lack of 11 spaces. I believe we are one short. But I do point out that there is nothing changed from the Sunoco site. The only difference here is that we're codifying the way the parking will look. So when Sunoco operated it, and I believe if not Sunoco, there was a gas station there anecdotally out here for 60 years, and Sunoco was simply the last operator of the brand station. So tonight I have Ed Deck, our engineer, who will walk through the site plan. And I have Mr. Singh, the operator, who will confirm that which I have told you with regard to what his application is about. There were questions as to the hours. I believe it was pointed out by Mr. O'Brien in his memo that between 11:00 P M and 6:00 A M, there, there will be no operation. And with regard to employees, Mr. Singh plans to have one employee on site. There'll be two eight-hour shifts, but only one employee pumping gas and one mechanic in the repair area. The way cars will work is the tandem cars parking would be for automobiles that are going to be worked on and employees. So the idea that cars would have to be constantly jockeyed about, it would only be for an eight-hour employee or a car that needs to be, you know, moved into the bay. Without further ado, I'd like to call Ed Deck. Unless, Mr. Rego has some questions?
Well, I wanted, I want to make a, a statement. I have read the application and took a quick look at the plans, read our reports, and my gut feeling is that there are more moving parts here to this application than may meet the eye. I have read the reports and I know that this gas station is in a, is a, from what I understand, is a permitted conditional use in this zone. I understand that certain conditions have not or cannot be met. The reports indicate that those deficiencies are pre-existing, which in the land use world has a specific meaning, pre-existing use. I don't know when the station was constructed, what the zone was when it was constructed, if it was truly a pre-existing, non-conforming use, which may have impact, when the zone changed, how long it's been vacant. So what I want to, what I want to suggest is that during your testimony, you cover that because I'm not sure, sitting here now, since, since we're a land use board, we wear a planning board hat and we also wear a zoning board hat, and there are different criteria depending on how we're sitting and what we're sitting on, whether it's a use variance, whether it's a D1, 2, or 3, or whether it's strictly a site plan with dimensionals. That'll probably unfold itself. So what I want to suggest, since, if we're, if we were hearing this clearly as a board of adjustment with a D variance, the Class 1 member, who's the mayor or the mayor's designee, and I don't know if either are here tonight, I know the mayor's not, and the Class 3 member, Mr. Demondo, if he's here, as of now, do not participate in this application because if it's a use variance, by law, Class 1 and Class 3 do not participate in this. So if you're here, please do not participate. You can take notes, whatever you want to do, just don't engage.
None of them.
Okay, fine. Then we have nothing, I don't have to go any further. So I think part of what I'm going to be listening to is what board we're, what board you should be in front of. It's this board, but what hat we're going to be wearing, and that depends on a number of technical things I, I think I need to hear.
Okay, well, in, in response to a number of things that you said, my discussions with Mr. O'Brien focusing on the issue of whether the use had been abandoned. So it's only been a matter of a couple of months since Sunoco was in operation. And it was only at the same time, within a couple of weeks of Sunoco taking out the tanks, Mr. Singh had an application in to put in new tanks. We were in contract with the, for the purchase of the Sunoco station as Sunoco was in operation. And as I indicated before, our initial contract was for a kind of a seamless transition where they took off their brand. We utilized their pumps and their tanks and simply went to an unbranded gasoline. It was only subsequent to the actual signing of the contract that there was a modification on the part of the Sunoco people and their insistence that they remove their tanks. So I would submit that there hasn't never been an abandonment of the gas station use and that therefore we, we stand here tonight simply looking for site plan approval to continue the use that I submit has not been abandoned.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Kevin O'Brien here. Mr. Rego, I did consider the abandonment question as part of my review of the application of both the zoning officers and his planning board planner, and I did not mention it in either of my reports because I did not consider any abandonment to occur because as counsel points out, the intent was always to maintain the gas station.
Okay. That's only part of what I, part of what I raised, but I, I appreciate that, Kevin. It's fine.
So with that, I'd like to bring Mr. Deck, unless you have further questions?
No, I think, let's see how it plays out. Mr. Deck, could you raise your right hand, please, when you get your mask on? Okay. With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth?
Yes.
State your name, spell your last name, please.
Edward S. Stack D E C.
Mr. Deck, you've appeared in front of this board many times as a licensed engineer. I'm assuming that's why you're here tonight.
That's correct. And also as a licensed professional.
Surveyor, and your, your licenses are intact and?
Yes, they are.
Thank you. Yeah, Wes, you want to hear more?
No, no, no. He's been before us many times. Good evening, Mr. Deck.
Good evening. Mr. Deck, you need to retain my Mr. Singh to draw up the site plan for the guest.
That's correct.
If you walk the board through, I think you have your site plan up there.
Yes.
And explain to the board the pre-existing conditions and how the gas station plays out.
Certainly. It's on the screen right now, sheet two of three. It's the existing condition plan. And look, this is, is the actual representation of the site prior to the pumps being removed. I left the location of the pumps in that area there. That's nailed out. The seven pieces out, the remainder of the broken concrete is still there. Where the tanks were is a mishash marked area here. Tanks have been removed and there's stone there now. The entrance ways are shown this night by a solid curved line or solid black line. They have two entrance and exit ways on Michigan Avenue and also two on Kedallard Boulevard. The parking as it was, was forced out of the way, but what I did was just show what could be if there were cars on the site. And that was pretty much the way it was arranged, just from observing the, the gas station what was in use. The existing structure has a small office in the front, right-hand corner of the building. And the remainder of the building has two automobile repair bases, two doors. The pumps, as I said, when they're there, two pumps, but there's no canopy. There are lights existing, one in the upper northeast corner of the property. It's an extension type light that's directed towards this area of the property. Another light is projected towards the rear of the property line here or the rear of the building. There's another light that is in the right-hand southeast corner, and that's projected towards the building itself. And then the third light is in the southwest corner, and that is projected towards the building and the parking area. Not the parking area, but the gas or the pump area. The four entrance ways, they're both are not, I shouldn't say both, not designated, but there's no designation as to the turning movements coming in and out of the site. The two on Michigan Avenue are quite large, the two on Boulevard are a little bit smaller. You can see the directions are shown on the front. The building itself, one-story masonry. And that's pretty much where you, and also in back here, there's an existing six-foot-high vinyl fence and then also a wood fence here that belongs to both the property owners and the property owners. A vitrail here that protects the building, being a two or west, and also a vitrail as you come into the property along the bottom of the, of the building. There are a couple of trees in the back, which will name three of them. And there are, on the southeast corner, a pylon sign, stanchion, the sign is removed, and also another type of pole stanchion which had two intro L E V type signs, or I guess you call signs, which displayed the cost of the different materials. Also, but again, there's a sign here, a sign here, it's a plain placard type sign, not, not illuminated internally, just a sign that gave, I guess it was Sunoco. Then I guess at this point, I'd like to go on to the proposed condition, and then I can discuss some of the comments that remain by both the board engineer and board planner. At this point, I'll get to that with my plan first and then we'll go to those other plans as far as the manufacturer designs. What we're showing here are what we proposed as far as what is going to be done to the site and how we could also address landscaping and parking. The, the pumps will be replaced in the exact same location as what was there prior to being removed. We'll have also a canopy. I can't see those dimensions from here, but it does cover.
Twenty-four by thirty-six.
Twenty-four by thirty-six. It does cover the existing concrete area, and that's the intent of what the canopy is supposed to do is to provide a shelter, you know, for both the cars and for the people working the pumps. And there's also a wee smaller kiosk that's going to be placed there in the middle.
Four by eight.
Thank you. Between the two pumps. And also be illuminated from underneath, projecting light down, not in any horizontal direction, just vertically down. The pumps, I'm sorry, the tanks that were there were three 8,000 gallon tanks and are now being replaced with two 12,000 gallon tanks. Total amount, volume's the same, it's just in a different configuration. 8,000 and 4,000 in each tank. One's going to have regular and, it's high test, that's what I call it. The other is also regular and diesel. That's how, that's the replacement, what's going to be done for that. We have, and also, I should have probably. We have, and also I should have probably mentioned, brought that up, on the existing condition, there's a trash enclosure area in the back of the building. That will remain, we're not proposing any dumpsters. The private pickup, some will come in at a designated hour, morning or late at night, pick up whatever trash, at whatever the interval is, which will be determined by the amount of trash that accumulates, but it'll be on a regular basis, whether it be twice or three times a week. The lighting will be reutilized at the three quarters. The signs will be reutilized as they were prior to the removal of the signs. The square footage of the signs will remain the same. I have a picture, and I can submit that as evidence of what those signs look like. So that wouldn't change. It just got taken down now, and those signs will be replaced. The entire site will be refurbished or repainted. The building itself making it look new, news we've had by scraping off the old paint, replacing, replacing repaint with sods. There was a border feature along the top of the building that had the Sunoco emblem and painting there. The applicant is proposing to use much of that same area for his side. Again, all signs, and I can say this, but I will iterate this now, will meet the standard of the municipalities for the amount of signs on the building and square footage of the sign, the amount of signs on the property and the square footage of the sign. So we do not intend to do anything that would not mean the current municipal code for sign location. The, I'll get my copy of the engineer's review, and also the planning board review, and I'll go through that. And I do have, like I said, a picture of the site that I'd like to distribute or at least have the board members that can look at to see what I was thinking about as far as what the signs look like, if I can answer that.
We can mark that, A1. A1, and this is, what, a photographic rendering, Mr. Deck?
That is correct.
Prepared by you?
Yes.
Okay, photographic rendering, A1.
That's of the existing condition?
Yes, existing condition.
Previous, previous Sunoco station.
Right.
I believe that's the previous, not?
Yeah, that's the existing, or the previous.
Previous Sunoco.
Little help.
Is this the only one you have, Mr. Deck?
I'm sorry?
Just the only one you have?
Unfortunately, yes.
We arrange your furniture up here.
Why are you getting, why are you getting, I don't like this. This isn't very bright.
Mr. Chairman, I think before I start addressing these two letters, if I could have those displays of the manufacturer's design of the pumps, like the canopy. As you can see on this plan, the configuration of how the pumps will be connected to the tanks, and there are details on how they'll be protected underground, and that is like a protection on either side of your tank that's placed. Is there another picture of the, if these are more details? That's, that's a good one there. That shows how the tanks will be placed underground and the access points in the pavement or the concrete that we've shown there. Do we have just one on the canopy?
Yes, two.
Okay. And that's, that's the plan view of the canopy. And it doesn't really have much information other than the size of it, which is thirty-six pumping for it. And if there's another one, okay, there, that's, that's, this one right here, this area gives the view of what that canopy would look like from a pedestrian view. Can't see that number there, but I believe it's.
Fourteen-six, and the canopy is three feet tall.
Okay. So fourteen feet from ground to the bottom of the canopy. Again, the lights will be inside the canopy itself, and we are not proposing any kind of, other than what the painting of the canopy is, the finish of the canopy, there'd be no renouncing to put any.
No branding?
Pardon?
No branding on it?
No branding, that's correct, yes. Okay, then I guess at this point, I'd like to go to the review letters, unless there's any questions that board members may have.
I think we're going to hold our questions, but I'm sure we have a bunch. I have a few already. But I think after we hear Mr. Singh and your testimony, then we could start, and of course, our professionals, then we could start asking questions because there's going to be a lot of crossover here tonight.
Absolutely. And also, when it comes to this and the tanks and all the installation procedures that are done, Mr. Singh will be required to receive permits from NGDP or Clean Air. There's probably about four or five different categories that have to be met, and he will be required to do that. I'll start first with the board engineer's review letter dated November 5th. On your site plan, number two, it does say federal and state permit guidelines and the courts of all those, which we intend to do. And Mr. Singh, if there's further questions, he could address those. Ten parking spaces, we're proposing eleven is required. So we would be looking for that deficit as a variance in the number of parking required. However, as Mr. Goodman said, there's going to be only one pump operator or attendant and one mechanic, other than people visiting the site to drop cars off or maybe to speak to someone. The intensity for the use of those stalls, we don't feel, are going to be there. And we feel that we have more than enough sufficient parking with ten. The air, if I could see that site plan again, please?
You have a photo.
Sheet three, yeah. The way we have the parking laid out is pretty much similar to what was there before. We had hidden parking against the building, on the AC side of the building. The engineer pointed out that this stall is eight feet wide with a five-foot access path. For one stall, they have to be handicap accessible, so it has to be eleven feet or a total of sixteen. So we would just extend that chart over that dashed area further, closer towards the Boulevard. It would be an occupied area, so I'd be able to fit that in there. It'd be a matter of an additional three feet, so we'd be able to still make that work. We have parking tandem, as also pointed out in the engineer's review letter. And that tandem, I believe, is a, is not allowed in the parking, you know, configuration of the borough ordinance. However, that is not going to be used for pedestrian parking. It's going to be used for employee parking and for cars that are waiting to be worked on, serviced or for parts that have to be received that aren't there yet. So it's primarily, not primarily, but not used for pedestrian traffic use, but used for employees and for the cars that are temporarily on the site to be worked on. The refuge area is existing, and we are going to utilize that area. We'll have access to it at different hours of the day. That will be coordinated with the owner of the property to make sure that there's nothing blocking it, but it will not be a dumpster where we have to have a truck that comes back and absolutely, it'll be all transfer signals enclosed in that area. The ADA, I just mentioned, talked about that, that was comment number five. The sidewalk area along the front and the side, the Boulevards of Cali Red, I believe they will require, although we haven't gotten a response back from them as far as curb, the sidewalk may be something that would probably curb, also sidewalk would have to be replaced. So that's something that we're already considering that it would have to be done. North of Michigan Avenue, I believe that's also Cali Red. We would be required to make whatever improvements the county has required for that. Unless, of course, there's something that the county doesn't, the town requires, then we'd certainly be willing to make the replacements for the county and also for the township, for the requirements, boroughs requirements. The applicants, no issue with that. That will take care of, I guess, numbers six and seven. And we will provide, on number six, provide them as required in the new letter. As stated in the review letter, grainings are managed, nothing's changing, no further in coverage. Everything's going to stay the same, grainings going to stay the same. There will be a new pavement, but that will be the same grain. So the intent, the applicants make this a very nice, new-looking location as opposed to what's there presently. The fire official, again, the applicant has told me, and he testified to that, that he will receive all the necessary required permits from the state and also from the local fire department as far as fire and construction departments. Landscaping and lighting, I think we went over that earlier. We're proposing twenty out of the volume along here to act as a natural type of fence of barrier, but also as more of a sound barrier to the people that live directly behind the site. There's quite a good distance between the paved area and the property line, so we do provide a pretty decent buffer along that area in the rear. And that, I believe, unless there's any further comments or questions. From the board engineer, I'll proceed to the planning board, I'm sorry, planners.
Excuse me, Mr. Deck, I'm starting not to be able to hear you. Can you speak up?
I'm sorry, keep my head up and talk.
There you go. So can you go back to the planting, because I missed that whole thing.
Certainly.
That's number thirteen, right? Your planting, the applicant is proposing twenty.
That's right, number thirteen of the board engineer's review letter.
I think we'll get some feedback. Hey, Kevin?
You there, Kevin?
You there, Kevin?
Whoa. Pick that microphone up, maybe? It's the microphone up here. Kevin?
Kevin.
I think we may have lost him. I'm sorry, Mr. Deck, just give us a minute.
No problem.
Let me go call Kevin and ask him to call in again.
Yeah, I'm here, Kevin.
Oh, you're here?
Sorry, I was having a little in and out there, but I'm back.
You're there? Okay, great.
Okay. Mr. David, can you put that back down? I think that'll work. Kevin, can you hear us now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Deck?
Okay, back to the landscaping and lighting, comment number thirteen. We are proposing, we are providing, are provided?
Kevin?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Every once in a while, there is an interference, but we'll work for it.
Okay, maybe if you mute yourself, Kevin, until you're ready to talk?
Yeah, I'm here, sorry about that.
It's okay.
We're proposing twenty, are providing along the rear.
That's about eighty now.
Sorry, are you looking for questions or comments?
No, not yet.
Okay.
And then we'll act as a screen, natural fence, and also a sound barrier. We have a fairly decent separation between the pavement and the rear property lines, so we're providing both the screening, which we are providing is a sound buffer, the distance separation, and also the attorney property owner's six-foot-high vinyl fence. So we feel that, and also the case that there's no lighting in the back, we feel that they are going to be not impacted by any of the proposed use of the site. The planner's review letter.
Excuse me, Mr. Deck. Because there was a lot to cover there, I think if the board allows, maybe Harbor would like to talk to you about some of these so we don't lose our way, but we could come back and ask. David, you think it's a good idea or you?
Yeah, I think it's.
Okay. Do you have anything?
Just, just a few things.
Okay. We'll see if we can get that out of the way, and then we could talk further when we're all ready to talk.
I wrote this letter before I talked to Mr. Goodman for, I'm sorry, for my comments on the first and second page for number two, for the federal and state approvals. I, Mr. Goodman did tell me that they could remove the tanks this year. I get confirmed with Ellen today that they, that they did. And Mr. Deck did say that any other DP approvals, he will, he will, he will meet. And I just recommend that any, any of those permits be submitted to the borough upon receipt. I do have a question I didn't have in my letter. We do have, based on the previous use, two garage bays, and then it looks like a little shop to the, next to it. And I'm wondering if it's still going to be a shop, or is it going to be any, or is it just going to be kind of maybe an office for the, for the, for the workers?
I believe that you have two bays that go from the front of the building to the back. There's this little storage room here for supplies and carts. And this area was used as an office, and I believe is still used as an office.
You did say that he's going to resurface the whole, or all the asphalt areas?
That is correct. Repainting will be placed. It's fairly broken up now because of the removal of the pumps and the tanks, so he's proposing to repaint the entire parking lot.
Next, the signs that show the cost of the gasoline, they were on a previous cycle. That's going to be done again, or is it going to be put on the, on the sign for the, for the site?
Because the, the signs were existing, we intend to utilize that, that we're going to use the same types of signs. It'll be a different name on the sign where it's at Sunoco. It's going to have the same square footage as the Sunoco sign was. Or if, you know, it exceeds the township's square footage, we'll make sure that we don't exceed the square footage of that sign or replace it.
Mr. Deck, has the signs been taken down?
Yes.
They are down now? And the poles are down?
No, no.
Okay, the poles are there, signs are down.
And where the, next to the pylon sign where the sign, like Sunoco's sign was, there were two signs, or I guess they're signs, illuminated digital LED placards or signs that give you the cost of the price per gallon, and he intends to reuse those. And if there are other additional, and also there's a sign along the face of the building, along that sod area along the top of the building, that's going to be going right here. It was colored like the Sunoco blue and yellow paint. It's going to be painted, and there was a sign there. If the ordinance reads that you're allowed one sign for the front of the building at a certain square footage, that's what the applicant will do. In other words, we're not asking for any new signs, we're not asking for any variances of signs. If there's a sign that the applicant wants to come in with, that's going to. If there's a sign that the applicant wants to come in with that's going to be different, we would add, go into the town for a sign permit. And the sign meets all the requirements, you're going to do that. If not, you would ask for a variance. Nothing basically is going to change along that.
Chris?
And just to confirm, you still have the two lights that are on either corner, and there's going to be a light that comes from the, under the canopy as well?
That's right. The three lights that each, the southwest, southeast, and northeast are going to remain. And we have, the new canopy has illumination projecting downwards onto the pumps.
And nothing on the building?
Nothing on the building.
Except for obviously internal, internal lights?
There are no internal lights on the building projecting to the outside.
Okay. Just in the pump canopy?
Yes.
And I'll go into my comment, number 10, utilities, I might have missed it, I apologize. You're just, you're not proposing any changes to the utilities? You're going to use any, anything, any of the system there that is what you're going to use?
That's correct. All the electric, gas, and water are remaining the same, there's nothing going to be changed.
And I think the only thing else I have is the, can the applicants submit a house estimate?
Yes, we need that as part of the approval.
That's everything I have.
That's it? All right, thank you, Chris. We will come back to the engineering report, all right, Mr. Deck?
No problem.
So thank you very much. If you're complete, Mr. Goodman?
Yeah, I'd like to call Mr. Singh.
Mr. Singh, state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, my name is Bhawani Singh, question is, can you tell me?
I'm sorry, you've got to speak directly to the microphone, and please speak up.
My name is Bhawani Singh, first name B-H-I-W-A-N-I, last name Singh, S-I-N-G-H.
S-I-N-G-H? Could you spell your first name again, please? I just didn't get it.
So, B-H-I-W-A-N-I.
Thank you. Could you raise your right hand, please, with regard to this application? Do you swear that the testimony you give shall be the truth? Thank you.
Mr. Singh, you're currently the owner of this property?
Mr. Goodman, I'm awful sorry. I have to, I kind of jumped the gun here. Mr. Deck went over Harbor Consulting, but he didn't go over the planner, and I think I interrupted him, interrupted you when you wanted to go over the planner's report, am I correct?
Yeah.
Can we backtrack here? I'm awful sorry, Mr. Singh.
But he stays sworn in, right?
Yes, yes, he is. You can stay sworn in. Whatever, wasn't another here, but we.
The review letter from the fourth planner, dated November 9th, from the plan.
November 9th and November 10th. Here's the.
We have a 9th for the zoning review and a November 10th for the planning report. So what are you representing?
I'm going to go then to the planning.
The planning report of November 10th, Mr. Deck?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
Let me just go through this real quickly. I think for purposes of the site design, I think these issues as far as the bolt variances go, the flexibility will lead to the attorney. So let me go back to the November 9th. Is there some comments from the planner about the entrance and exit rooms, or let me address those?
So for the board members, you should be looking at the November 9th zoning review V2.
I'll start on page two, under B81. The fuel pumps and lubricating and other devices shall be located at least 25 feet from the property line. The only, which is that, that's certainly obvious on this plan, you can see that these areas meet that criteria. I'm not sure what that distance is in the front, but I think that does meet that. I have six, and then to the pump itself, let me just see if that was. It's 24, so 12 plus 8 is at 20 feet. I guess those pumps are less than 25 feet from the property line, but that's where they were and where they're being replaced. So we don't meet that 25-foot requirement.
How about the canopy, Mr. Deck? That looks to be.
The canopy is only eight feet away, but according to what I'm reading here, under A1, all pumps and lubricating and other devices.
What's another, what's any device? I mean, does the, does the canopy, which is a structure, create another conditional use deficiency, given the fact that it's six feet away?
Not that I interpreted from the ordinance, and I don't believe that it's also in the planner's report, but that's something I guess we could bring up to the fourth planner.
Okay.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, in, I didn't see that italicized, the pumps are 17 feet plus minus from the property line. It's not reported, but it's pre-existing addition. We noted that, that's correct. All similar gasoline and oil substances stored underground, at least 12 feet from any property line, that certainly we do enforce, as it does say. The item number three, that we state that we have no outside storage, permanent storage, there will be temporary storage if the vehicle is needed for repair. No other storage will be outside, other than the trash receptacle. No park storage, no abandoned car storage, no supply storage, other than temporary parking vehicles that are being worked on.
I don't want to jump in, but I want to just add a couple other items since you modified. I'd like to make sure that there are no tires out there, no tire display, no used tires, nothing, hubcaps, none of that kind of thing going on outside. No storage.
That, that is correct. That's my understanding that the applicant has said that would happen, but I think that's probably something that should be placed in approval resolution.
Okay.
That was what we discussed, and that was what the applicant is expressed to make.
All right. And will the automobiles be stored behind the solid screen fence, no less than six feet in height?
Which one is that, Mr. O'Brien?
A3, bottom of page two of Mr. O'Brien's report.
All of the accessories will be stored within the building, and nothing is proposed other than trash enclosure, which is masonry, is going to be outside. There's no storage of any equipment.
But there'll be, the temporary cars parked as a.
Yes, yes.
Will they be parked at night behind a six-foot-high fence?
As I've read it, Mr. O'Brien, it said all dismantled automobiles and similar equipment and cars shall be stored behind the solid green fence. I think if a vehicle is not dismantled, but simply waiting to go into the bay, I did not read it as having to be behind the screen.
No, it's interesting. Okay, interesting. I mean, if a car is waiting with no fender, one could argue it's sort of dismantled, but we can just move on from there.
Well, let me just clarify something else. This is a mechanic shop, not an auto body.
Correct.
That's right. So a car that doesn't have a fender came into the shop without the fender, they're not putting a fender on.
Correct.
Am I correct? Okay. So that would be very few and far between.
It could happen.
It could happen, though.
Could.
I don't know. That.
I think these are good questions that perhaps Mr. Singh, rather than an engineer in the.
Right. We'll get to Mr. Singh.
Under page number four, adequate provision for disposal of trash and refuse on premises I discussed earlier, but also the deposit of motor waste oils, materials will be inside of the structure itself. And then I believe there's probably other regulatory types of permits that need to be acquired to have that removed or stored and then removed from the site for waste The number five, which speaks about the off-street loading and unloading, there's no, other than the need to bring in auto parts, except for repair, and supplies, which probably be, you know, from a small type of vehicle. There's no reason to have any kind of large tractor trailers on the end and bringing in any kind of equipment or supplies for the use of the operation.
So.
What I'm really trying to get to is the section here about the two entranceways.
Mr. Deck, I just have to ask you a question. If you look at line item four, and pardon my ignorance if I don't know who answered or wrote these questions, but it seems as though in Kevin's report, he states adequate receptacles shall be provided and so on and so forth. In italicized, it says interior receptacles will be provided. Who answered, Kevin, maybe you've asked, answer that. Who answered that?
I did.
You did. So you're saying that interior receptacles will be provided for that?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's correct, Karen.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Deck, go right ahead.
No, no, it's fine. The location of loading gears, as I was trying to explain, is that the site is not, other than selling gasoline and probably cigarettes in the kiosks, there's no other sales in, from the site, particularly from the existing structure of the building. That's only for repair of vehicles.
So did you, I don't know why I can't hear you too well, but did you say only cigarettes, did you say?
Well, whatever, there's, from the kiosk itself.
So usually there's cigarettes, oil, washer fluid, is that what's going to happen?
Probably, right. They probably have like maybe some washer fluid outside the.
I think that's again for Mr. Singh.
Yeah.
Okay.
But there's the, within the station itself, nothing is proposed to be sold from within the station itself. What I'm trying to do is get to the.
Curbs.
Yes.
When you get there, let us know what number you are.
Well, maybe I'll just.
So if you go to item seven, I think you might be looking for that. Curb shall be constructed so as to channelize all traffic permitted, cut curbs, curb cuts, there are, there shall be more than two curb cuts.
Right, I think that's exactly the item that I need to address. If we could go to the entranceway on Michigan Avenue. They exceed the allowable width opening on both of those driveway openings?
This is 40, this is 34.
So, Mr. O'Brien corrected for a long, I believe, the allowable opening is 24 feet. So we would reduce the size of both openings.
Great, great. You've just answered about 1,000 of my questions. Okay. So you're going to reduce the size of this one and this one?
Yes.
Okay.
What we will also do, and I believe was also a concern of Mr. O'Brien and also the board engineer, is the way those entrance, egress ways or points are utilized. We will not, we will put a no left-hand turn on the exit side of those two openings. We've got people from wanting to make a left turn across three lanes of traffic to get to the north, the northbound side of Michigan Avenue. So we would do that. It'd still be an in and an out, an ingress egress, because we would want people to utilize both driveway openings for the service area. But we would restrict the turning of both of those locations. The ones on the Boulevard, that one, I believe, is already 24 feet, closest to the intersection.
That's 26.
26 and 36.
We would like to keep those the way they are. I don't know what the county's going to say, but if the board feels that they have to reduce in size, we would agree to that, but we would like to keep them the way they are.
Mr. Deck? A second? Mr. Deck, I may be jumping the gun here a little bit, but this curb cut really concerns me. 50, 60 years ago, when it was a Sunoco station, and we were a little bit more of a horse and carriage, it didn't have an impact as it has now. Coming off of that intersection on North Michigan and the Boulevard, that's a congested area. Would it be anywhere in your plan that you could concede to say that you would eliminate that opening right there and have three means of entry and egress, and utilize this space for more of a grassy area? Because on our busy times coming into this gateway, that's congested like crazy, and you're seeing people flying through that area when people are trying to get across that street to the post office and to the other very big establishment, dumping dummies.
No, you're absolutely right, as far as that is, you know, something that was put in 50, 60 years ago.
That would never have been permitted.
And it probably looked very well.
Then.
Okay. Problem with closing that ingress point is that then they would, if traveling from the east to west direction, they wanted to go to the gas station, they would have to go in through that second opening, pull along the pipes going, looking now in the east lane direction. Once they finish their transaction, then the only way out would be on North Michigan Avenue, go through the traffic light again, and then they could hurry.
I understand it, but I've known this property very well and a couple properties down. I remember when there was another applicant before us with a property not too far away from here, that we were concerned about coming out of his auto body shop, crossing through the mini mall without going out and coming around. And he did say, oh, no problem, that's not going to happen, but on any given Sunday, that's, that's an accident waiting to happen. You see the influx of people that we have now in our town, and we also have a whole litany of new things that are about to happen. And I can't express enough how dangerous that drive is, right there. I don't know, I didn't discuss this with anyone, my, our board members or anything, but I would like some feedback on how we could talk about it more later, but when you come out of here, look how close that intersection is, they're cutting right into that turn lane. And really, when you think about it, that's a double solid line, you really shouldn't be doing that anyway. You should be going out, getting around, but that's just whipping right around. Yes, Mr. Gormont?
I would agree with you that it should be ingress only. I would actually rather see the other one on North Michigan be closed, the most closest to it. But that one, I think, for ingress, it's good, for egress, it's not. I agree, it's hard.
If you could control it.
Yes. And maybe it could be reshaped with a barrier or an island so it's more directive, so that it's inconvenient to go out again.
And it also could elongate the grassy area.
Yes.
And we could have a little bit more of.
Herbies.
Exactly. Mr. Pantina?
I agree with what's going on here. I think coming up Michigan Avenue and going northbound, especially if you had left turn arrow, it's easier to go in that driveway and get in the lock gate gas than to come around and make a turn. Egress only. Several places in the planning report, and I'm not. Several places in the planning report and, I'm not quite sure, I just read Harvard's report, several places in the planning report, including paragraph five, where you just were, and all the, I guess that was the zoning report, and then in the planning report, under planning comments, number four or five, I think you should show, I think it, it should show turning movements on getting into the driveways from Michigan and, and the Boulevard, and then that can control how, why the driveways have to be, because obviously they have to be smaller because of the, of our work. And, and then they can, you know, give further support to making that just an egress. You know what I mean? I mean, I agree with your comments, but I think if you close that driveway, you're going to have some funky, that'll result in other problems.
Yeah, you're right, and you, I, you see our concern, but if it was a one-way out or something like that, that, that's why we need to explore some of these things.
Are we talking about an egress only and an exit only on that side?
Yeah, I, I believe that's where we're going with it, for now. It was just a thought process.
Okay, so my client is, is okay with that. We make up the, one of the curb cuts an egress only and the other curb cut a exit only.
Mr. Goodman, for the, this is just sake of conversation right now, we still have to speak with the board and this and that. They may, they may think something else may have to happen here, but this is something that, I'm up on that corner quite a bit, and I see some of the problems that are going on over there. So we can correct them now.
I'm only indicating his inability to try and work with you on that issue.
Beautiful, thank you.
So that really was the, I think, main thrust of the planning comments, there were other items, but as far as lighting goes, and I think I addressed that on the engineers' review letter, trash areas are addressed on the review letter, storage areas, we pretty much, I think, explained that there's nothing other than, than the trash which is in the So that really, unless there's other questions for me on the planning review letter, I think...
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Deck at this point? Well, I think I went against my own rule, right, and jumped the gun, but maybe we have, maybe we have Kevin O'Brien now have any questions for Mr. Deck. Kevin?
Thank you, Chairman. So, out of this, I mean, he's answered the, I'm sorry, he's reviewed both of my reports and I'm satisfied with the responses of the committee, sir.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Goodman? Thank you, Mr. Deck.
Thank you.
You're still under rope, Mr. Singh. Thank you.
Singh, are you the owner of this gas station now?
Yes.
And you've heard some of the testimony with regard to the hours that you're going to operate here? Do you confirm what hour?
We have only six to nine.
You can't hear him at all. He needs to speak louder and smaller.
Yeah, speaking to that mic. And it's my understanding that from 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM in the morning...
It's not open yet.
Not open?
Yes.
Okay. I also had indicated to the board that you're going to have one employee at a time working, pumping gas.
Yes.
And you're going to have one repairman or working the garage.
Yes.
A question came up with regard to what goes on in the repair garage. I take it that there will be no cars in disrepair in the lot, in the parking area, correct?
Yeah, I, I bear in mind.
That everything will be repaired inside. You're not planning on doing any auto body work?
No.
There was a question about car coming in without...
No, nobody, just pull a bit.
Okay. There was a question with regard to this kiosk that is part of the academy. Are you planning on selling any products?
Yes, we have, we have a gas station, we keep cigarette, saving the cigarette in the booth, because you know, it's convenient for customer and also like oil, we should wash it, because if somebody comes, they don't have the oil, so very hard oil. We have to check oil, my worker, or I work gas pump, we have to service the customer with the oil or we should wash it. Just couple, not like stock, we need to like a little bit so customer.
Okay, Mr. Singh, there was a question with regard to the concern that there may be tires or hubcaps or other materials ancillary to what people see in repair shops, but you're going to have none of that there on site, correct?
No.
There was a question with regard to the interior of the building. You have your two repair days and then you have an office, is that correct?
Yes.
Is there anything else going on in the inside?
No.
That's it. Okay. Questions for Mr. Singh?
Yes, I'm going to, I have many, but the board, does the board have some questions for Mr. Singh? Mr. Gormaldi?
I think this is, Tom already touched upon, so the sales area will be limited to your kiosk, and I guess maybe they have cases of windshield wiper fluid or anything, but that will be limited to the island. They won't be spread across the property.
My thoughts, someone...
As you say, the inventory, inventory for windshield wiper fluid, I guess if you have any...
Any product.
It'll be, it'll be stored inside the, the building.
Inside my building, obviously.
There won't be piles of boxes all over. The only thing that'll be in the kiosk is what you readily can sell that day.
The kiosk, because it's cold weather, we need to people go inside gas the pump and come inside the stay booth, because I work in only three year gas pump, no kiosk, no canopy, I don't, how I feel. So I don't want my worker, they want a little bit looks good to station, but I promise you all, like board member, I leave nice place, clean.
It appears that his son has some ability to embellish some of the testimony, perhaps he can be sworn in?
Sure. Could you state your name, please?
Rajan Singh, R.A.J.A.N., last name Singh, S.I.N.G.H.
Mr. Regal?
With regard to this application, Mr. Singh, do you swear the testimony you're about to give somebody the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Raj, do you have anything to add to what your father said?
Uh, no, I think he got everything right. So there will be no tires, nothing, you know, we do run a, another mechanic shop up in Short Hills and in Monseign, so there's nothing like that, cars coming a day and the second day, third day, they're out. There is no auto body work that's going to be happening there, no tires, nothing that's going to be staying outside. I actually worked at Sunoco in 2009, 2010, 11, I think, and there used to be like a big, like six feet cans of oil sitting outside, which I would put in every single night and take it out. We're not going to do anything like that, just put like, you know, a couple oils in the kiosk, one make sure you just to show people that we carry, and then everything else is going to be inside.
Okay. Thank you.
My question was just beneath that. We real, all of the drives sitting outside that you're pitching around.
Yeah, we like to keep everything very nice and very clean, so you know, people come in and, you know, get out and very clean.
While you're redoing the station, is there any thought or intent to have any type of alternate power, generator system or anything for the location?
Everything's going to stay the same today, it was. So there are no changes to anything like that.
Mr. Regal?
Your hours of operation, you mentioned 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM, would that be seven days a week?
Six of...
6:00 AM to 11:00 PM?
He just did it in reverse.
Great. Okay. Would that be seven days a week?
So, no. So 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM Monday, Friday, and then we'll do seven to 10:00 on Saturday and Sunday.
Thank you. I would, I would like to say with all respect, I'm asking about the tires and the hubcaps, not to be funny, but we have, you are on the busiest street that we have in Kennelworth, and the one thing that I would not like to see, nor would the residents like to see, is that as soon as it gets a little cold, all the deicer comes out, six pallets of salt, all that, it's just, that's not what we're looking for. That's not, that's not how we're going to enter the gateway. Two blocks away is our city wall, our town hall and our library. If this gas station is put up the proper way, it's going to be part of the community, not like, oh my God, what did we do? So that's why we're asking these questions, to be respectful.
No, that's not going to happen, maybe I was...
Some other questions that I had, Mr. Singh, you said you're the owner of the property. Are you, do you own the property or do you lease the property?
I own the, I buy the...
So that's your property, 100%. So with respect to the tanks that we talked about earlier, when Sunoco does a project, they usually have a team of men that come in to do their tanks, and they do their underground, do soil testing and things like that. Now, you said you own other express gas stations.
Yes.
Do you hire outside sources, sources, or do you use the same criteria that Sunoco or Exxon or somebody else would use? How do you go about that?
So the same company that took up the tanks, we hired the same company to install it. Because they've worked previously with Sunoco, the air station, I think for past like 25 years. So we're doing everything professional and we hired the same company, and they're going to be doing everything per the D E P code of the state.
Okay, very good. Yes?
Yeah, I just have a question on Michigan Avenue, because there's two, as far as they both going to be, going to be egress, egress as well there, or are they going to be...
I mean, I think we can just work with the township as whatever the township likes.
Did you hear, I'm sorry, did you hear the question?
It's going to be egress, egress going in on Michigan Avenue.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes?
In regards to the mechanic shop, what are the hours for that?
So mechanic shop, we open at 2:06, probably from 5:00 PM. Cars from 7:00 PM to 7:00. But that's on the one side. On the weekend, so they like load and that is like our...
Will that be run separate? Will you be leasing that direction?
Not yet. My son is mechanic, my younger son is a, I have three sons, this older man, my son actually own a can shop, that's my son, my kids want to, it's my own business, please.
What? Okay, so I do have some, anybody else? Did I see your hand? Okay. I do have some questions about the parking. You talked about that the parking is primarily used to stage automobiles that are going to be, eventually become worked on, correct? And the requirement is 11, but you only have 10 spaces, correct? And you're only, you will only probably have two spots for the employees, one for the pump guy and one for the mechanic, and the rest would be all storage. So did you look at any other means to achieve the 11th space?
I guess, Mr. Deck, you were the one that laid out the parking, was there any way to get an 11th space outside?
I, I mean, I have some suggestions, I don't know if you tip a look at that.
Well, just looking at what we have here, the rejection, if you have another idea, I'd be glad to hear, because I think, I tried maxing it out, specifically, so leave areas where, you know, it's parched and things are in and out fairly easily.
So, Mr. Deck, in the upper right-hand corner, you have a 40-foot opening?
Yes.
That you said you're going to reduce down to 24?
Sure.
So that's 16 feet right there. So if, if you were to take that 16 feet and take a look at that and maybe tandem a car in here, another one there, you would have 13-foot space. You get those two cars, send them over there, you just picked up your 11 spot.
If the board has no objection to that, I have no objection.
Well, the thing is, is that you're closing that drive, so it's not going to impact.
Exactly, and that's why I didn't have there, because the drive is still open. Right, but now it's reduced in size, I can...
And then you meet the criteria.
Yeah, I can use like, with tandem parking.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Pantina?
Chairman, does that note that what I mentioned before, when you closed that driveway or narrowed that driveway and you showed that spot, you really need to show turning movements on here, like your old white template from coming over Michigan, you're going to put that no left turn restriction on either way, so you don't have to worry about course and relaunch, but see how, especially your, I guess your fuel refill and coming in at night, I guess, bad, right? So worst case scenario, coming in here, putting the template right on there, and then also with the egress, egress option coming out, because if you have, there's hard turning movements, especially with the way you have the, the parking way now, the parking perpendicular to the zone, you know, on the east side of the building, the parking in the back, and you're going to have to make sure you still get vehicles to come in and safely maneuver while you park. Plus, Mr. Singh's going to have, somebody backing out of the garage at some point, you know what I'm saying? I think you should really, the turning movement templates are going to help you decide and make sure of where these spots are going to be and they, they be there. Without getting...
Well, yeah, I, I see, I...
Especially if you're going to put one up in the upper corner after you, after you closed the driveway.
Well, I think, just what Chairman said, that area over there should fit two cars side by side. And again, you know, that, that would be on the premise that everything, all the other spaces are occupied and...
Yeah.
So it...
But it, it helps you meet your criteria?
Yes.
If, if you would consider going that route. If you're closing the curb, you pick up all that space.
Exactly, exactly. I don't think that's going to be the reason for the traffic circulation, I'm sure that I'm just, yeah, I'm sure.
Okay, so I want to go back to the curbs. So where the curbs are going to be cut in order to accommodate your drop curbs, you would also have to take that to the next joint or whatever's already damaged there and not leave that. In other words, the space between the 40, the space between the 40 and the 34, right now, I don't know what that is, Mr. Gormaldi could look at that, maybe it's 10, 12 feet. At this point, that should just be removed for the sake of, it's probably less expensive to just remove that, do your curb cut, drop it, come back up and, and get it done there in one monolithic pour.
Yes, and as what the engineers review letter, it's to be replaced if and as directed.
Okay.
So, we understand that.
I think if we're directing to resize these, we're directing to replace them.
The curb?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's the direction.
Yeah, I mean, if and where, if there's good piece, we can try leaving that. Obviously, right, if the finished joint is a former spot or doesn't match vertically or horizontally, maybe that'd be moved, and that'd be something I think that the board engineer would have input on as far as what I see.
So with, I'm sorry?
And what is the, the box out here?
Some sort of electric box.
If it's a subterranean...
Yeah. Might even draw in, it'll be something that's no longer used.
So finally, with respect to the, the curb cut, the 26, the 26-foot press curb on Michigan Avenue, you would then leave that at 26, you would not reduce that to 24?
The Boulevard?
I'm sorry?
The Boulevard?
Yeah, what did I say?
Michigan.
I'm sorry, on the Boulevard, I'm sorry.
I would like to leave it as it is. Again, if and where it's directed, if the curb is damaged or it's not, you know, good repair, would have to be replaced, but I, dealing, doing the county, dealing with that and then county ordinance, I know one of their major recommendations, criteria and requirements is curb to be replaced.
Okay. On, on page three of three on the plan, I noticed in the landscaping area with the, the beautiful trees in the back, yes, that buffs the fence and all that, but in the front, again, on Kennelworth Boulevard, between the two curb cuts, it just says grass area. Are you proposing to do, can we do something else there than just the grass in order to brighten up that corner, in order to give it a little bit more curb appeal?
Well, that would be in the town's right of life, it's certainly of recreational worth, certainly we look at it in terms of...
Okay, because I noticed right across the street, in that mini mall there, they have a, they did at one time had a beautiful flower bed going in there, and it just eased the eye line on that major intersection.
Now it's a weed bed.
Yeah, now it's a weed bed. Once it changed hands, and, and Mr. David just brought up a great point, and, and gentlemen, Mr. Singh and Mr. Singh, I, I'm, what we're all trying to do, not only for us here in the board, but for our town and for you as well, we have a beautiful town here and it's only going to get better. We have a beautiful town here and it's only going to get better. So you are in our gateway, you are right there in our face. So what you do is gonna put the postage stamp on everything else that happens in our town. So we need to make sure that that looks right, okay? And I know it's a gas station, and people say, oh, a gas station. There's a lot of beautiful gas stations out there. The right color paint, the right landscaping, and I wish you well with it. But we need to make sure that this is all followed the, the right way. So with respect to the existing 36 depress curb on the left side, up the boulevard, are you anticipating reducing that or keeping that the same?
Keeping it the same.
You wanna keep it the same? Okay. The trash receptacle in the back, not the trash, the concrete pad that's in the back, is going to be used for, let's call it household garbage. Your lunch, your things like that. That's not gonna have breaks and, and stuff sticking out the back. Okay.
I wanna say something, sir.
Yo, sure, anytime, jump in, I'm here to.
You know, I love Kennawood because before the Roger Park, 10 years, now it's been transferred.
Uh huh.
I love this town because my family grew over here. And I buy this property because when we came, my son came, 2009, they work in gas station.
Okay.
And they work day and night over there. I like this station, but I promise you, every old member, I wanna make whatever township like it, I wanna make nice.
Okay.
That's why I don't change anything. I want to have a green, make nice, like, good location, but whatever you say, I wanna do for you.
Okay, well, it's not whatever I say.
No, I mean, I like my location.
But I can only make some suggestions.
Yes.
So I'm gonna make another one. I see that the trees and the landscaping here is to maintain for one year. One year really doesn't cut, okay? And, and you seem like somebody who knows and wants to keep a beautiful place. But I don't wanna say if we pass this, the condition is that you gotta do this for 20 years. That doesn't make sense. But I would like to increase that because most people come here and say that they're going to do this for a year, it never gets done, then we have to come back. We need to put something in place that that corner always looks right. What can we do?
So we do have a company, we do have a landscaping company that works for the other businesses?
Right.
Same as a small company that come in and cleans the snows, right?
Before, I'm not.
One, one gentleman, one thing at a time.
I said before, I'm not own this property, I know, I know it's too much mess. One day I'll close my property, township call me, they have a lot of really, somebody complained. When we get called, we clean by itself, everything one day.
Next thing.
I deal by itself, I can't find landscape.
The point he's making is that before he even owned the property and he saw that it wasn't being kept in good condition by Sunoco and we did receive a phone call that the property was in disrepair, Mr. Singh in his own volition went over and cleaned it prior to actually owning it.
Which area are we talking about, Richard? I'm sorry? Which area are we talking about, the front, on, on the boulevard? You see this area here? Yeah. This landscape area, all it is is a patch of grass. Okay. And, and I think something really nice could be done with that. If, if in fact this here, if this in fact is chewed up for whatever reason and this has to be reduced a little, we can enlarge that. But I understand why they, that may have to be bigger and that may have, I understand. But it's just too barren at the face. Curb appeal is everything.
I think, Mr. Chairman, you hit upon it, this is not a tenant, this is an owner of the property.
Exactly.
There is evidence.
And I need pride of ownership and then I think we'll be manifest in the way.
Landscaping plan. Right.
Landscaping plan may be reviewed by our planner, planner and engineer just to make sure that it meets everyone's standards.
Absolutely, we certainly can sense that.
Okay.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Now, you keep saying if we're, if we're reducing or adjusting the curb cuts. And I think it's within our place to request that these things be get done. And either we can leave it that they work it out with our planner or engineer or are we asking them to come back? But.
I think it is my position that I would love to have those two to 24 and then let's review this. Yes, Mr. David?
To add to the, the comment about coming back, for me, I don't feel that I'm seen enough visually. You know, if you think back to the case we just heard, we got to see it before and after of the house. I'd like to see what the site is gonna look like visually when it's completed. They own other gas stations, you can show pictures of what they own in other towns. I don't know how easy it is to, to render up, what is the building gonna look like? What are the canopies gonna look like? What are the signs gonna look like? All of that should be in front of us before we approve this application. And so for me, if we were to vote tonight, I would oppose this application.
And would you wanna see revised with that?
Absolutely.
Photographic rendering, so all gas stations do it. Would you wanna see revised plans showing the in, the out along the boulevard and maybe?
With arrow lines and the whole bit, absolutely.
And Mr. Tita's movement diagram, circularity diagram. And even if we make this a ingress only, we also understand that, you know, the tractor trailer that's dropping off gas at 2:00 in the morning, well, you may decide to go out that thing indoor, but it's 2:00 in the morning. Because that's maybe where the only circulation is going to be allowed to do it at that time.
Mr. Mattia?
Yeah, I, I agree 100%. I don't think, you know, I don't think we should be designing this on the fly and trying to imagine what it's gonna look like. And no disrespect to these things, I'm sure their intentions are in the right place. But we, as a board, I don't think we can ask on just a very great description and it's gonna look nice. It would be great, like, you had said in the previous application, what a great job they did as far as presenting the, what the house is gonna look like. And, and this is, this is Michigan and boulevard, you know? At least an elevation or some evidence of, of other business that we've worked on, that they keep a nice establishment, that the, you know, we've, we've, we've looked at office buildings and asked them, what, you know, renderings, you know, what, we've been involved with, you know, shades and color. And here we're seeing nothing, just black and white. I think we need to see more. And then even from the engineering perspective, I think we need to see more, you know, we're throwing out some numbers, I understand it's 24-foot max cuts on the curbs. How's it gonna work, you know? There is a concern. So they should put some, a little bit more time into it. Showing us that's gonna work, satisfy, should satisfy our professionals. And, and I'd be happy for this thing to support, but I don't think we have enough information.
Okay, so let me ask this question to Mr. Regal. Mr. Regal, this is a, this is a pre-existing condition. Am I correct?
I don't know.
You don't know, because that was the question we asked originally, are we wearing it? So.
It'd be great to get a little more background on that, if we're gonna carry it anyway.
So I don't, we, we can cross a line or we, we don't cross a line. We, we need to, Mr. Goodman, I think, what we're all saying here is, we just came up with some very valid points that are not presented on the site plan, which could be. And we do have an intersection here that is the main intersection of our town. And we would like to take a look at something that's a little bit more pleasing to the eye without us designing it. These were some suggestions that we had. Now I know that you guys said yes to that and, and we appreciate that. But it seems as though, I know you, I know, I'm sure you wanna get started, you wanna do something. But I think what I'm hearing right now, we're gonna need some more. Your thoughts?
Well, I guess I'm trying to understand, you want, for example, the color, he's planning on tap painting the building. You want to know in the front area that he's gonna plant some flowers? You wanna know what flowers he's planning on, on, I mean, it is a, a site plan for a gas station that does already exist. It's as not, it's right now not in very good shape. And his plan is to new tanks, new mecanum, clean up the exterior. Basically, turn this back into a functioning gas station. Instead of Sunoco, it's gonna be called Express Fuel. If, if, the, the, the items that you seem to be concerned with basically are more akin, I think, to a conditional use where you're, you're viewing this as a, as a D3 application that you are deserving the right to turn it down because you don't want it here. And it's, our belief that the gas station is here and we simply want to put it in shape to function. We're, we're not really asking for anything that is other than a pre-existing condition. The fact that Mr. O'Brien points out that there are parking issues, well, it appears, Mr. Chairman, you've resolved potentially the parking issue by coming up with a, an extra place for the space. So given all that, if we really don't need to give any proofs for why we need an 11th space, if in fact we've come up with the 11th space, the issue seem to be, what's it gonna look like? And, well, you know what it looks like now. We're not adding any square footage to this building. The only thing we are adding, which we spoke with Mr. O'Brien and when it appeared that we had to come here for site plan, we decided that we would upgrade it with the canopy. So the canopy was simply an add-on because if we have to be here, we wanted to fully renovate the site and make it look as attractive as possible. So with the canopy, the lighting remains the same, the signage location remains the same. The building right now has peeling paint and is in a dilapidated condition. The testimony tonight is that we plan on repairing the masonry and turning the, the, the gas station into a newly painted location. If the issue is what color, I believe that Mr. Singh indicated he was gonna paint with the existing red.
I wanna go township it, whatever township want, too, I wanna, I need a light, I need a light.
I mean, we, we, we've been, we've been, and I think Mr. O'Brien will confirm this. We have been at this issue for four months. Mr. Singh has purchased this gas station and has been carrying it for these many months. As we know, business is tough in this COVID environment. We really need to get started. The board is asking very good questions, but for us to come back and simply tell you that we plan on doing what you said. We're gonna plant flower bed in the front, we're gonna paint this thing using a, you know, the, the gray color scheme that he indicated. We're going to come before your sign ordinance and make sure that the Express Fuel sign complies with whatever size the, the ordinance requires. But it is important from a standpoint of this applicant who has been carrying this site for a number of months to be able to, you know, move forward as best he can. There's a lot of work, a lot of money has to be expended in order to get new tanks in. I hear what the board is saying with regard to the appearance, but I strongly urge you to reconsider having us come back to simply tell you that we plan on painting it this color, planting flowers in the front. We're.
Mr. Chairman? Well, let, let him finish his statement.
Well, I was gonna say, with all this, with all due respect, I mean, he's being repetitive at this point, so.
Yes, but, but he does have his floor, Mr. David, let him finish. And once he's finished, then I'd be happy to open it to you.
Yeah, we're willing, we're willing certainly to work with you on the ingress and the egress and do whatever you think is best with regard to the access. We need the four openings, we're willing to make one an entrance, one an exit, and we're trying to do our best to comply with your wishes.
Okay, Mr. David?
I was just gonna say, I, I feel that I was clear on what I was looking for. I think at least one other board member, if not two, expressed similar, you know, concerns. We're not looking for you to tell us what you're gonna do, we wanna see what you're gonna do. And that's what I'm looking for. You come back and we're gonna see exactly what the colors are, what the planners are, what the, the canopies are gonna look like. All of that should be done. When Shell replaced Arco down at the parkway, they came in with a full rendering of what that gas station was gonna look like when it was done. That was, that was a clear change from just one company to another. My position is, well, there might be a hardship, but once those tanks came out of the ground, the use was abandoned. That's my position. So again, I see that there's a hardship there. If there was supposed to be an agreement between Sunoco and the current owner, I get that and I would sympathize with that. But the bottom line is, for me, the tanks were removed, the use was abandoned.
Okay, Mr.?
Wait, wait, wait. Do we have a legal ruling on that?
No, 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 look, I think what the board is, if I meant. I'm sorry, I said no, I meant to say, Mr. Regal. I'm sorry, Mr. Goodman. I think, I think you, well, you're going a little, you're assuming too much. I think, when, when I presented a number of gas station applications to boards, and I always have, I did a lot of Exxon work and I always have Exxon come in with what it's gonna, what it's gonna look like. It may not be exact, but it's 95%. If they have a gas station down the road or up the parkway and it's gonna be the same, I said, take a picture of that, bring it in and show the board. I think what the board, especially at this location, at this location, what the board wants to see, right now we're looking, someone said, we're looking at lines. It's an important site, I think the board wants to put something there that's, that's nice, you know, whether, a, a gas station. But they wanna see, if I vote yes, I wanna point to what it's gonna look like. Otherwise, if it's approved and someone comes up to Mr. David in town and says, "Oh, great, what's it gonna look like?" He says, "I don't know, I just said yes." So I think the board wants to see, like, if you have, you have other stations, if it's gonna be similar to one of your other stations in your color, it's a, do a nice photo. I don't mean a little snapshot, but maybe Mr. Deck can help, get a nice photo, bring it in and say, "We have one in Mountainside," I think you said, "it's gonna look like this." Just so the board's comfortable with, with the scheme. That's, and the same with the landscape plan. That's. Mr. 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 Gramaldi? Let's add to this.
Well, yes, we'd like to see the paint, but if you tell us you had to paint it gray, you had to paint it gray. But we're looking at a drawing that you're, you're showing us and you're, we're looking at a drawing. I know we're, Mr. Depp testified that the entire lot's on, you have your tape. But we're looking at a drawing that says existing asphalt. So the proofs in front of us don't match the statements that are getting presented to us. And something that our chairman had said about a year and a half ago and said, we have to ask the people presented to us to be 90%. Don't come in here at 60% and saying, telling us what we're gonna do. We need to be closer to 90% so that when Mr. Regal is getting his list of conditions, the list is only this long, not repave this long. So when we're presented with existing asphalt and you're telling us, no, you gotta repave the whole thing, we're happy you're gonna repave the whole thing. We're glad about that. You know, we didn't, if you, if you wanna suggest that maybe we're being nitpicking, well, we could nitpick it, we could get there. That's not our intention. We, we want this to open, we want it to open soon. You know, part of the area in the front that Mr. Prusor was talking about is the grass area here. Well, this also used to be a Jersey Transit bus stop. Has anybody investigated that they're gonna do anything with that or if that's gonna get re, re-upped or anything? Because that was a Jersey Transit bus stop. That's what the picture that you handed out, there's a concrete pad in there right about this area. And there's a concrete pad, that was a bus stop at one point and Jersey Transit took all the, any shelters away. But we're just asking for a few things that you, we could say, this is the thing that's filed with us, it's on record, it's here, and we asked somebody to sign a law on it. If you're going to manipulate these things, great. You know, whatever you're gonna choose to do over here that you can work out with Kevin and Chris, this is great. But right now, it's a lot of hypothetical. Yeah, we also, addition to that, we'd like to see what color painted it. I mean, a picture would be fine, you don't have to do a full rendering, a picture. But engineering-wise, those things that we, we're asking, and, and we respect your engineer, highly respect your engineer, he's presented to us a lot, but there's a lot of hypothetical right now. So we're just asking for some of it to be back on paper so that we can understand it.
Anyone else? Mr. Goodman?
I guess, carry the application, go the next step. I guess carry the application until the next, well, the letter for us to get the information you're requesting.
Can you, Ed, could you turn around a revised plan in two, three weeks? You have enough time to give Kevin and Chris enough time to take a look at it?
Well, it would be the second Thursday.
It would be December, I think you have to be into us by November 30th. Ends of the month, I think the meeting the 10th.
Chairman, we can look for things about two weeks prior to the next hearing, which would be December the 10th.
Is that an option to you?
The next hearing would be December the 10th is what Mr. O'Brien just said, so they need.
Yeah.
Anything would be two weeks in advance.
Getting it by Thanksgiving or the day after or the, or.
Mr. Depp is saying.
In November, yeah.
Won't be possible? Of course, no one here had a ruling on this, we're just, we're still at the top stage. And, and, and I just asked the vice chair, what can we do whether this is going to be a gas station or not, and I don't know the answer to that.
Well, I think Mr. Goodman went to ask for a legal ruling a short while ago.
Well, it's, it's an existing gas station.
It was an existing.
It wasn't an existing gas station.
That's my position, it was a gas station.
Okay, but it hasn't, you know, hasn't changed uses or anything, they want to come in and make it a better gas station. And I think what the board is saying is, fine, but let's put some meat on the bones, you know, let's see what, what you want to do, rather than just talking about seeing lines.
We went through this issue with Mr. O'Brien. Does he have an opinion on the issue of abandonment, which I heard your vice chairman say is an abandoned gas station?
Mr. O'Brien, did you hear that?
I did, Mr. Chairman. Abandonment is a legal question. It is a term of art in land use, and it refers to two things, the physical abandonment of a use and the intent to abandon a use. And from what I have seen of this application, this does not meet that legal definition of abandonment. I prefer, of course, to our learned and wise counsel.
Kevin?
Did you guys just see a bus go by? So, so tell me what this means.
Because I have some ideas.
Okay, abandonment, as Kevin said, in the sense of what we're talking about, abandoning your use, does, you have to mesh the facts with the intent? So, you could have, based on what I'm seeing here, I don't believe, since it was only abandoned, or it was only vacant for, for like here, a few months?
Vacated.
Vacated a few months, moving the tanks to me, taking them out and putting them in to me would exhibit an intent to keep it as a gas station. I don't think, based upon what I've seen or heard here, and I would agree with Kevin, I don't think it's abandonment in the classic sense, we have an owner, if this guy wanted to come in and put a gymnasium in there, then I might say, you know, then the intent is clear that you're at a gas station. But they want to continue to do what they're doing, I think it has been a gas station, it wants to be a gas station. The question is, what's it going to look like? And, and I think that's, that's what, that's, and the site has to be tweaked to make it conform a little bit more with what the boards, the boards, the direction the board's going in.
I did ask Mr. Raygo, is there an inability, because I, I think every, I'm just making an assumption, I think everybody on this board understands the tanks are going to go back where the tanks were. The canopy's going to go where, sorry, the pumps are going to go where the pumps are. Taking their concern about getting going, is there an ability for us to say, will you start that legal process to do that while you're addressing our concerns of functionality? So that, because that's going to take some, that's going to take some doing to get that process going. So, can we bifurcate this and say, we'll approve the reinstallation of these things? And I don't think, I, we may not have to approve that. You know, we may just be able to follow a permit for that, but can they take that and run so that we can get?
Bifurcation assumes that we're a zoning board and we're separating a use variance from a site plan, meaning someone comes in and gets a use variance first and they deal with the site plan. I think, I mean, if this was, if we approved it tonight, and we've done this on occasion, if we approve, if we approve any application and someone has a real need and a hardship to get going, there have been times when we've said, okay, while I'm preparing the resolution, go to, and it normally comes up at a small, someone wants to put a deck in, contractor's ready to go, nothing's going to happen, while, while I'm doing the resolution, they, the applicant may get the nod and the approval to start, you know, at their own risk, subject to the board. For something like this, I don't think, I mean, this is not a baked, a baked pie yet. I mean, we're still dealing with a lot of open things. If there's some permits they can start on, under, under, you know, assuming certain things, if they want to do it at their own risk, knock yourself out. But I think moving, moving things around on this site right now, it's a little premature.
Well, picking up on what the gentleman said, it is impossible to get permission to do what would be taking place underground, which is the, it is weather sensitive and trying to get the tanks in place, that doesn't really affect at all what the gas station is going to look like. And if we could go ahead at our own risk and get the tanks in place, then when we come back to you with architectural renderings and the upgraded site plan, we will have at least been able to maximize the use of our time.
If, if that doesn't, Kevin, did you hear the question?
Kevin? Yes, I did not hear all of it.
Okay, the question from Gary Goodman was, yeah, they want to start to get a jump on, on something at their own risk while we're considering the application. He wanted to know if it would be acceptable to at least do the underground tank work. My view is, if it doesn't require you, a zoning officer, to sign off on anything from a municipal standpoint, if we strictly the state and/or the county, my gut would be they could do that, but if it requires municipal approval, you might be going out on a limb to do that. But that's, that's up to you in terms of what you think your authority is on the tanks.
And that would require municipal approval because it is a structure and it needs a zoning permit to be approved for it to be installed, and then that would have to come prior to the construction permit and electric and all the rest of it. Now, if the board were to decide that they were okay with the tank replacement and allow the applicant to proceed with this aspect, and only that aspect, if there was a board resolution on that, then that would direct your zoning and zoning department to move that along.
So.
That would be somewhat unique.
Earlier, earlier, I was thinking along Mr. Grimaldi's lines until I heard that part of the story, because I know when we sign off on a plan, we sign off on the plan that's presented in front of us as well. I don't want to go down that pike later on. By the time all that gets in place, you're in your, you're in your three-week margin. I got to go back to Mr. Depp. Mr. Depp, how long will this take you to get not what we're asking, what we're suggesting? And you, you heard this going back and forth, you have Mr. Singh and his son standing there trying to get this thing off the ground. You heard Mr. David and others, including myself, who do agree that we need more than what we're seeing. It's somewhat, I don't want to use the word incomplete, everything is to the imagination. If you said to me, another Sunoco station was going in there, I could picture another Sunoco station, but I can't, I can't picture an express, I can't. And to, to listen to Mr. David's passion about what he's saying and Mr. Raygo's analogy, if somebody said, what did you approve? I don't know. I know what they said, but I don't know.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I know it's beyond the 10th, gets closer and closer to obviously the holidays, but, you know, is it possible that we hold a special meeting?
I would love that.
You know, whatever, as you were starting to say to Mr. Depp, how much time do you actually need? And I agree with Mr. Depp that Thanksgiving, you know, is not, is not enough time. So, if you need an extra week and we're talking the week, you know, like the 17th or that week, a special meeting for the application, and only for this application, I would be amenable to that.
The next two Thursdays are Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve, so if you're looking at a Thursday, it would be the 17th, basically.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, but I mean, it doesn't have to be a Thursday.
It doesn't have to be a Thursday?
True.
If Mr. Depp can conform to Mr. David's request and we could do something like that, listen, we want this right, we want to make it happen, but we don't want it half-baked.
And I understand everything the board, Mr. Chairman, was saying. And as far as the timing goes, I appreciate the fact that you're offering for a special meeting because the regular meeting, I wouldn't be able to make that. But what needs to be done here, I could do like, I could show the turning patterns on my plan, I could change existing proposed, of course, but I think the important part, this part's going to take a little longer, is to show you a good representation of what it's going to look like. And that's going to take a little bit more time. I'm not, you know, I'm probably have to get some sort of rendering or better pictures or something that's going to be able to address all your concerns, particularly the landscaping in the front, you know. That's why I appreciate the fact that the special meeting is offered, because by then I'm sure.
You could take a site plan, forget the elevations for a minute, or like the board wants to see it from the side, the front and side, you could take a site plan, color it up, put green, something green where the, you know, along the boulevard, the parking can be one color, the building can be another, just so someone could look at it and immediately distinguish.
I don't necessarily think that's correct.
Yeah, I don't think that's what I'm.
No, 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 in addition to the.
No, I understand, I could do a very nice presentation as far as like a rendering on a plan, but for what the board's looking for, they want, I understand, that's what we're looking for, so.
So, I guess what we're looking for is a date? What would be the date that would work for you, Mr. David?
Well, I think somewhere around the 17th would work for me, whether it's Thursday or not.
Because we give him, sure to be, to be fair, we should give him a larger list of what we're looking to be included, that we're asking it to expand this.
So, why don't we do this? If there, if everybody's understanding that we will hold a special meeting, let's look at the date first and then make sure that works. And if that works, then we could do that, because that may not work for everybody here. So, where's the 17th fall?
Right there, on Thursday.
It's a Thursday, next.
It's our regular meeting, this is be the next, and not much.
Forget, forget. No, forget that. So, December, December 17th or sooner?
I would like 17th, because that will give you this time to get everything in.
So, you're saying you can't make the December 10th meeting?
Because it's November 30th, you have to be done by, right?
You have to get everything in two weeks before the 10th.
And we are attached with that too.
But I mean, we're, he's got 90% of this, he has one portion, can we read, as the board, Mr. David, can we reduce it to a week to take a look at?
No, that was Mr. O'Brien's request. Two weeks, they have to get their, everything, two weeks in advance for Christian and Kevin to review. That's our, that's our policy.
We don't, listen, we're not reinventing the wheel, I'm not telling you how to do your work, but I'm not asking you, what I am asking you is, since you have everything else and this is what we're asking for, will it take you more than a week to review if we could get this thing on the, on the scheduled date for the 10th?
I don't think I can.
Oh, you can't get it, Mr. Depp, okay. I think I'm, I think I'm trying to fight everybody's fight.
I think he can revise the plans, but he can't do a rendering, a picture.
Mr. Chairman, was the issue of the tanks with that issue?
I think so, Mr. Goodman. I'm not saying that because we didn't rule on it at this point, but I can't speak for everybody, I can only pick up the vibe of what I'm hearing, because it would be putting the cart before the horse, I think. So, I think have all your submittals and your plans and your things ready to go, we could see if the building department and everybody can expedite on our side, you know, but, you know, I would say that would be not a good idea.
If we ultimately approve it, they can maybe start, so I want to do a resolution.
If you feel the vibe in the room, that's not going to happen. So, why make them spin his wheels?
So, we're going to continue on December 17th? Is that what we're?
I have a firm.
We need a head count.
I'm good, I'm good. Looks like we're all good.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman. We're looking for.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, are you good? We need you.
Yes, yeah. So, we're looking for the things that, I'm asking this, I'm not stating.
Now, we could state some of the things that I'm looking for.
So, we're looking for definitions, we'll start on the ground first and work our way up. We're asking for definitions of ingress and egress.
Can I say something?
Excuse me one second, Mr. Grimaldi. Mr. Singh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, this is my manure gas station, my color, I like express fuel, every location same local, like, this is for my manure station.
See, yours is black color.
And this is my mortal side, this Summit Road mortal side, this is my express fuel, this same color we wanted my can.
So, Mr. Singh, with respect, if that's on a plan and that's before us, this would have been smooth sailing here.
I don't know anything because we buy property, I don't know, I don't need a lawyer, I don't need an engineer, I just hire same. 30 years ago, they put tank, same, so local hire him, they take their cow, we hire him to, for a work. If I know that complicated too much, I find I pay my mortgage, 4,500, we take 1,500 tax, 700 by property, insurance, we have $7,000 per month.
Mr. Singh, if you, if you heard anything here tonight, this board is trying to help you.
I know, that's, I understand.
So, what we're going to do is, we're going to set some parameters in order to guide this along a little bit, even though we're not supposed to be doing that, but we discuss some things, we don't have a problem putting them down. Mr. Goodman and Mr. Grimaldi, set them up, Mr. Grimaldi.
So, I think we have discussed definitions of the ingress and egress, how they're going to revise them, how they're going to possibly limit them. The statements they made today as far as repaving the entire lot, that should be illustrated on the, on the drawings. They're going to paint the entire building, some type of definition. I'd be so bold to say that those pictures would probably be suitable, but it's up to the board's desire if they want a full architectural rendering or not. And then.
The curb cuts.
Well, yeah, the curb cuts were the initial ingress and egress, and then a rendered site plan.
Gentlemen, we're unable to hear in a recording if you're talking.
A rendered site plan with landscaping definitions as he has in the back, also to the front. The front should definitely be low because of visual, but those are the things I think we're asking for.
And the revision with the parking showing the 11 spaces.
Well, that comes together with the curb cut. So then, if they could put it in the northeast corner or.
That's, that's for them now.
Yeah, that's up for them to do what they want. Again, that, that depends on, that's why it's hypothetical about what they're doing to that 40-foot curb cut, to what they could do inside. So, we're assuming a lot and we're not saying a lot.
But in our discussion, Mr. Grimaldi, we talked about on North Michigan Avenue, two 24-foot curb cuts, so they could accommodate more parking on the other side, whatever they could do in the boulevard entrance and egress with the arrows, and in addition to that, the, oh my God, the landscaping to the.
The landscaping area, yeah, okay. And as you said, definitions and examples of the signage, they should have a sign package for including all the signs, one sheet, all the signs, and I understand he's talking about utilizing the existing pylon pole for the sign, and that, I'm telling you, that pylon pole is probably older than most of us in this room. And then the other one that has the.
Speak for yourself.
Well, no, it's older than that. The other one with the prices on it, just, yeah, little quick indication of what it is. The other one with the prices on it, just a little quick indication of what it is.
Okay. And Mr. Pantina had something too?
Oh, the traffic movements.
The traffic movement. Yes, Mr. Pantina?
Traffic movements, but maybe in the time that Mr. Depp has worked in on this, we can incur with the county because North Michigan Avenue and Boulevard, both county, they're both gonna have to go up county planning board review, I'm sure, unless they're ready to, can't they get it? But they may have something to say on the driveway with. They may have something really big to say about planning anything in in the right way, even though they're not gonna maintain it right way, I'm just saying. But maybe we can curl on after four, present the back and forth, you know...
Kenny's gonna have to prove it anyway, yeah.
They may have something to say about the two of these right there.
Did we have anything else to add? Mr. Goodman, do you have anything to ask?
That's it, December 17th, correct?
Correct. Okay. Oh, we have somebody in the back. I'm sorry, Mr. Goodman.
Coward ordinance has hours of operation for gas station between 2:00 a.m. and 2:10 p.m.
Who's speaking? I can't, I don't...
No, it's Patrick.
Patrick, you're speaking?
So, coward ordinance of gas station should operate between 2:00 a.m. and 2:10 p.m. and they're operating 2:01 p.m.
So they would have to comply.
Okay. They would just have to comply with the ordinance that is set forth in our borough. And that's an easy fix, okay? And thank you for telling me that. I didn't really know that. Okay. So I'm a bit lost.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. O'Brien?
Mr. Chairman, with the December 17th date, that would be contingent on the new plans being submitted on or about December 3rd.
That is correct.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, is this a carry or a re-note?
A carry.
We're gonna carry it. We'll, Kathy, you'll have to put a squib in the paper about that. Yeah, we can carry it, no further notice, assuming we're on board, to December 17th, 7:00 p.m. in this room.
Okay. So basically what we would have to do is have someone make the motion to carry this to the 17th?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. David, second by Mr. Scadari. Roll call?
Oh, sorry. Mr. Paterno?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Grimaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Pantina?
Yes.
Mr. Mazzio?
Yes.
Mr. Pellelo?
Yes.
Mr. Scadari?
Yes.
Mr. Valerio?
Yes.
Mr. Zeharke?
Okay. I did want to say that I'm not sure if I'm in error, if I was supposed to open that discussion to the public before I carried the, and I'm not sure. Mr. Raygo, was I supposed to...
No, we're, because it's being carried? Yes. The public, there's gonna be more testimonies so the public can have their say after.
Okay. So, all right. Gentlemen, thank you. Gentlemen, thank you. Okay. Next item, any comments for the good of the board?
I just wish everyone, I just wish everyone, happy Thanksgiving to each other.
May I echo those words?
May I echo those words? Happy, and especially to you, my friend Kevin.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, board. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, sir.
Okay, Kevin, thank you for that. Okay, Kevin, thank you for that.
I make a motion to...
Motion made by Mr. David? Motion made by Mr. David? Seconded by Mr. Pantina. Seconded by Mr. Pantina. All in favor from the public? Anyone from the public wish it to speak? Looks like we have Mr.... Addressing a rep, Mr. David?
I want to mention, I'm gonna quit for a minute, and for this, I'm gonna, this is session, 108, there's a, it's got a, a lot of gas stations. The other thing is, you guys, you guys, the executive, we'll get that clear sign for the next year. It's gonna continue your progress for many years, we're, and early in summer.
This could've been part of the hearing. This could've been part of the hearing.
Right.
Not a safety case, a safety addressed, we will address that.
If you have a safety issue, what is that? What is that?
Michigan Avenue, North Michigan Avenue, on the far end, there's a tree, there's a tree on your property that drops berries, like flowers, the whole side, makes it very silly.
Who's tree is that one?
I believe it's a, it looks like it's a, and it's been wrapped around, it's around our power lines. We get a heavy winter, I think that's gonna be a serious issue. How long, maybe, maybe a board again, a board again, you guys, whatever you want to do, but true to the address, to that, it is a safety, very slippery. I don't feel like turning on my lights where, over the year, I know, so I know.
You gotta be very careful. You gotta be very careful.
I know.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. David. Have a happy Thanksgiving. Motion to... Motion to...
Motion to close second.
Made by, made by Mr. David, second by Mr. Mazzio. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That's our last thing. That's our last thing. Mercy to adjourned by Mr. David, second by Mr. Mazzio. All in favor?